Yes.
Okay. Walt?
Yes.
Can you keep the minutes for the start?
Okay.
Hey, good evening, folks. 6:30. We'll call the meeting of the planning board November 18th, 2020 to order. At 6:30. Someone just entered. We'll do a roll call. Of the members in attendance. Walt Meiser.
Here.
Roger Hoyt here. Richard Wright.
Here.
Larry Boudreau.
I'm here.
Here and associate member Skip Nolan.
Here.
Okay, and. My usual. Readings here that. In ordering, order an exact time, so agenda items may vary at the board's discretion. Exception of public hearings, which cannot start prior to the scheduled time. Agenda items are those reasonably anticipated by the chairman for the hours prior to the meeting. Folks may be taken. Documents submitted for review can be under the planning board tab on town website, also on My Town Government. Under the meeting agenda. Meeting is being recorded. The minutes will be at the official record. But written minutes will be prepared for easier reference to the topics covered in actions taken. This is a remote meeting. Please keep your microphone unmuted unless you've been invited by the chairman to speak. When the floor is open for public comment, please raise your hand using the feature provided in Zoom. Wait until you are recognized by the chairman to speak. If I don't see you, just be patient and send a chat or something. We'll try to get to you. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda?
No move.
Okay, Walt Meiser and Richard Wright. All in favor, we'll do a roll call vote. Roger Hoyt, yes. Richard Wright.
Here.
Walt Meiser.
Here, yes.
Larry Boudreau.
Yes.
Yes, okay, so the motion carries. For in favor. Now, Skip, as a associate member, we have our form. So you're. Not participating as a voting member tonight. But we do welcome your. Wisdom and knowledge. As a. Comment here, we're still under the Massachusetts State of Emergency COVID legislation, which affects timelines for approvals. And recordings and such. As a note, the housing need survey is online. It's on the town website. W W W dot Ashburnham dash M A dot G O V. Be open for the month of November. There's a tab on the left-hand side that says surveys, and you can find it there. Will be used in preparing, updating our housing production plan and the housing chapter of the master report. One more minute, 6:35, we can begin the public hearings. Walt, can you bring that Hey Road application on share screen?
And. I may be a little slow because I'm taking minutes too.
Okay, never mind then. You keep taking the minutes and I'll see if I can get it. Get to Zoom. Okay, admitting people to the waiting room. As these are public hearings, we will take and record the attendance of all those attending the meeting. So we have myself, Mark. Could you state your name?
Sure. It's, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, it's Mark Popham. I'm a representative, engineering representative for Greenstone Realty.
Okay, that's a different application. Is that correct?
Or is you? Yeah. Okay. Yeah, it's, it's for Old Colony Road.
Okay, we have Richard Wright. I have a number here, an answer phone number. Two of them.
Which one are we doing? I thought we were doing Hey Road.
Yes, but I've got people in attendance here that it's a public hearing.
Okay. Okay.
Mostly we need to record anyone who does speak at the hearing. They have the. Location on hand, so we'll call the public hearing to order at. 6:37. We'll read the notice, planning board hearing, special permit for our judicial department above pursuant to Ashburnham zoning bylaws. Section 3.22 N in 5.16.3A. Planning board of the town of Ashburnham will hold a public hearing to discuss a special permit application submitted under Ashburnham zoning bylaw section 3.22 N accessory dwelling unit 5.16.3A use and dimensional regulations by Joshua Lambert of both special current would allow. Just in garage adding an apartment above. So. Given that's the notice of time. Strong discussion until 6:45 PM.
Roger, if I can say, there's someone with phone number 1-603-4001. Oh, 69 that we're, all we're getting is background noise from that phone. I don't know who it is, but please mute your. If you're not speaking.
Thing on Hey Road, all they want to do is they want to build an apartment above their garage.
Who's this talking? Who's this talking?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
We're. Jesus.
Let's mute us, okay?
Despite what the agenda says.
This is the Hey Road. You read the notice?
Yes, we're gonna have to.
Who's presenting for Hey Road?
The printed said 6:45, so we can't begin before then.
Oh. One night I took off the website since 6:35.
On the agenda, yes, the notice that I just read here says the. Hearing is at 6:45.
Okay. So what are we doing?
Want to do the scenic road special permit for Russell Road, Russell Hill Road?
Um, no, I think we will. Go back to the agenda here.
Can I always do the continued public hearing for Wilka Road as well?
We know who wants to get out of here.
It's gonna be a long one.
A little quicker. Just will. Do some other. Things here if we can. We don't have any other correspondence to read tonight. Walt, if you give us a little update on the. Other boards and committees.
The only one that I'm, that I'm party to is the MRT marijuana review team. And that committee has not met since the last. Meeting where I reported that. We were waiting for the scheduling of a public. Community meeting. To be scheduled. Prior to any action being taken on it. The community meeting has been set for December 1st at 5:30, Tuesday, December 1st at 5:30. There's nothing to report on it.
All right, Richard, anything from economic development question?
Nothing.
Did they, tonight?
Think you cut off there, Roger.
Well, this is not doing well here. Let's see, fill somebody here. Okay. One more moment here. Said subdivision updates, I think we will have. It on. Open discussion. Is there any new business that some members want to add to the agenda? Okay, we can go to bylaw updates, DLT updates. We'll have Karen with us on the night from M R P C. To review the survey results. Might ask members if they're available to meet at 6 o'clock on the night to discuss D L T A. Grant status with Karen.
Works for me.
Yeah, works for me.
And Richard?
Good.
Okay, so we will have a meeting at 6 to about 6:25 to go over the D L T A. That will allow sufficient time to review that and get in our, of the hearings. So we will post that as a meeting at 6 o'clock on the night. And update the agenda. Moment here to get back to, now what is, are people seeing on the screen? Are you seeing the meeting minutes? Are you seeing the agenda or the Hey Road permit?
Yeah, that's the Hey Road right there.
Okay, good. And members, did you receive the correspondence? From today?
What the?
The letter, the, to, as part of the application?
Yeah, stating he's going to be residing in the house across the street?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right, 6:45, we can now begin this hearing again. Call the hearing to order at 6:45. I could read the. Hearing notice again. On the planning board hearing, special permit for our judicial. Apart. Ashburnham zoning bylaws, section 3.
Houston, we have a problem.
Still having trouble hearing you, Roger.
Yeah, you're right. Your sound keeps getting out, Roger.
And could, Larry, could you read that?
Notice a planning board hearing, special permit for a garage addition, an apartment above pursuant Ashburnham zoning bylaws, section 3.22 and 5.16.3. A, the planning board of the town of Ashburnham will hold a public hearing to discuss a special permit application submitted under Ashburnham zoning bylaw, section 3.22. An accessory dwelling unit. And a 5.16, 1.3 use and dimensional regulations by Joshua Lambert. This proposed special permit would allow for an addition to an existing garage and adding an apartment above at 33 Hey Road, Ashburnham, Mass. 01430. Map 66 parcels 36 and 37. The public hearing will be held. Right now, as of a Zoom meeting on Wednesday, the 18th at 6:45. Copy of the application and plan may be inspected at the Ashburnham Land Use Office by appointment. I need to call the office, 827-4100. Extension 117 on mytowngovernment.org. Under the planning board window. Any person wishing to be heard on the application should appear at the time and place designated. Per Roger Hoyt, the chair.
Hey, thank you, Larry. Call, roll call. Members present, or Roger Hoyt, present, Richard Wright.
Present.
Larry Boudreau.
Present.
Walt Meiser.
Present.
William Nolan. William Nolan?
Yep, you're present.
Okay, thank you. I will, at this point, receive the application. Now have the notarized letter. And. The other item noted here is social permit that's, Board of Health is reviewing that, so that would follow under a condition of.
Approval, right?
Who's representing the applicant?
I'm representing, my name is Nate Lambert.
Thank you.
With Josh Lambert, he's right next to me.
Lambert, could you speak?
Yep, I'm right here.
Yep, go ahead. You've got the floor.
Nate, tell us what you got.
All right, so. Give you guys this brief background of myself, my family. We moved to Ashburnham two years ago from Lemonster. My dad's always wanted to live on a lake, so he finally got his lake house. Yay for him. And recently this year, why this project has come to fruition is my grandparents have lived in Florida for five years. And with the pandemic and everything, they really wanted to be with their family again. And being on a, you know, a limited income and at their age, we wanted to provide them with a living space here with family and keep them close, really. We didn't want them to go and, you know, buy a condo somewhere close, but not close, you know, right next door. So with myself, my business partner, Rob, who's in the meeting as well. We own a construction company, so we had the idea, why not put an addition on the garage? Improve the, the space that exists right now and have them live with us, complete renovation of, you know, the whole garage, expand it a little bit bigger, give them enough room so they're comfortable. Give them everything they need and or want. And, yeah, I mean, so we have a design team with our company Signature Series Construction. So our design guy, he was able to come up with this whole design and it's not too elaborate, but it's something that. We've talked to neighbors and they all kind of support us. I haven't heard any drawbacks. So here's our design here. Want me to walk it, walk you guys through it?
Yeah, I can lead you through it here as I. You can describe what I'm pointing to if you wanted me to start there.
Yeah, absolutely. So that's the existing garage, the square you can see. It's a two-stall garage. Has a, it's a Cape style garage, so there isn't upstairs. There's no like me walls or anything, so it's, it's just a pitched ceiling. It's, it's, it's for storage right now. So the proposed would be to. In that square, the staircase will be eliminated. And, you know, that whole structure, the first floor will pretty much stay the same. No walls we've taken down, only the roof. And then, yeah, as you move down, that is the proposed addition. It's 16 by 24, so that'll give my grandparents a part, place to park their car, so they'll have a parking spot as well as, you know, the paved area in front of that. You can see in the bottom left, there's, you know, like a mudroom, an entryway to kind of to distinguish, you know, an entryway. To get upstairs, the new staircase will be right there. It will be extra wide, so if by chance they ever need a lift, we can, there'll be plenty of room for that to be added. And then moving upstairs. One note I will say right now, I spoke with Heather Monday and the Board of Health would like this den, which is the smaller room in the middle, right? To be eliminated because that could potentially be a bedroom. Under the classification. So that will, that'll be gone. So it'll just be a large living room with full kitchen. On the bottom right is the master bedroom, so with a nice big closet, bathroom. All the amenities they need, washer dryer. They're gonna have all electric. Appliances, all electric. Heat. Found that was probably the best way to go about this is just use electric versus trying to run more gas lines and whatnot. And it's all high efficiency, so I mean, it won't kill the bank for. Their bills. And then on the top as well, there's a deck that'll come out. And it's gonna be a covered deck, so they don't have to worry about snow removal or anything, and it's, it's a nice place to, you know, just get out of the house and sit down and whatnot, read or whatever you want to do. It'll be covered. And the staircase will also be covered, so there's no real maintenance that will need to be done. Here's the outs exterior view right here. So you can see the two stalls of the original garage will still relatively look the same. And then the addition will be a slightly oversized door. Maybe just a foot bigger. And then it'll have a overhang, you'll have windows in the front, so you can look out the window and look at the lake and get up, get, get the full view. I'll be one, it'll be, there's one cut of the roof over the deck. That would just kind of split up the roof, so it looks a little more aesthetic.
Nate, can you orient me? Is this the view from the street?
This. The front of the garage, yes, that's the view from the street, yep. And then if you scroll down, you'll be able to see one of the side views, which has the door to get into the stairwell. Can't see it on this picture. You can see the small roof all the way at the bottom in the middle. That'll just cover that door.
Okay.
Here's the side view, so we have windows to the garage, windows for the bedroom. Door to get inside. That'll be on, if you're looking at the garage straight on, it's on the left-hand side. Out of, out of sight from the, from the street.
So you indicated that you'd had conversations with the health. Board of Health?
I, well, Heather on the the building commission had sent me an email with a memo from the Board of Health stating that. They want that den to be eliminated because it could pose as a bedroom and our septic system is for three bedrooms and the main house has two bedrooms. And the garage would have one bedroom, but the den can be classified as a bedroom, so that needs to go.
I get you.
On a, on the, on the subject, then they, you go, your application notes, you're going to add a septic tank?
Correct. We would like to add a, in the memo, he had suggested a 1500 gallon septic tank. Be added in, in addition to what's already here. Just so. I'm, he didn't really clarify the reasoning, but I would assume so. We don't have to have pipes going, you know, across the street and everything just being.
I think that's indicated. Maybe on your. Submitted to Board of Health, if I can. I wish I could rotate these, but. Rotate the view.
And then Skip on Hey Road, there's, there's no, I'm assuming that it's all septic and there's no access to the public water or public sewer.
Yeah, Walt, that's correct. Hey Road is all private septic system and private wells.
Okay. So if you, if you tell me, Nate, what you want me to point out here, I will highlight it on the, put the the hand onto it on the, on the site plan here.
Yeah, kind of dead center, there's a square and that is the existing garage right now. Below that is the leach field. So. Kind of to scale. That garage, that square is 24 by 24, so. More or less. Well, 16 feet is like half of that, give or take a little bit more. So the addition of the garage will come down 16 feet from that. It's hard to see that I submitted a a drawing with a scaled square of the addition. So basically.
Is that in here or I'm gonna, or?
No, yeah.
No.
On the paper, I submitted it. I don't know.
Okay. This was included also, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah, there it is right there.
So it's, it's a different orientation from the other.
Yeah, so. Right there, you can see what the proposed garage, you know, to scale, dimensional wise would look like. So. It, it's well more, I believe it was. Correct me if I'm wrong. If it was 25 feet from a leach field, you can have a structure. Or is that incorrect?
Up to the Board of Health, that's, that's their requirement.
So off that image, you can see the border of the leach field just barely and drawn from that, it was, I believe, like 35 feet. So we were in the, in the specifications that I had read online, at least, that that was permissible. So we were in the, in the, um, specifications that I had read online at least, um, that that was permissible. And. You can see in front of the garage, that's not paved right now, that'll be paved. There's not much else being changed there.
Alright, so, uh, you have Hay Road here. Your existing, this is across the street.
Yep.
So maybe you're thinking of dropping a tank on the backside of that? And then just running that down to the leach field?
Yes, ideally, yeah.
Ideally, that's what you're gonna do?
Yep.
You have the elevation, so that's all gravity?
Yes, sir.
How are we getting, uh, domestic water to the accessory building?
So the plan will be to, to drill a new well. Because the existing well right now is. Is basically. Right next to the existing house, so. If, um. If we could drill a well. In the back, within the property, of course. That would be ideal to get water. I know this, this house has a shallow well. Hopefully you can drill another shallow well, I don't know. If there's a favor to a deep well or not, but, um, that's something. We're ready to address, it's just kind of following these steps and then. Spending that money, basically.
The Board of Health. We just don't have a. A decision yet, is that correct?
From the Board of Health?
Yes.
Correct, yes, this, the special permit will be, I guess, step one and then Board of Health. And any, anyone else we have to?
Yeah, that's. That's a condition of the special permit?
Right, right, yeah.
Um, so. So you did make note here that you were. Intended to. Add a second well and septic tank, so, um. Now.
Should we ask?
Skip again, uh, did we get any, um, comments from Concom?
Not specifically, um, prior to this meeting, uh, but I. Will note, uh, if I may, that on one of the drawings. That was previously. On screen. There. Keep going. Yeah, that one right there. There, there, um, if you can blow that up just a little.
Tell me one, cause it's, it's gonna.
One more, one more. Yeah, well. Just to the, a- as you're looking at this photo, uh, plan, to the right of the. Item labeled deck, there's some flags labeled WF four, WF five, if I can. Read those correctly. I, I'm assuming those are wetland flags?
Nate, do you know what those are?
I, I do not know, and for, I, I don't, I'm not, I'm not knowledgeable of what the WF.
At a stone wall, is that your property boundary to the right of that, the addition?
No, it's, it's fifty feet from.
The corner of the garage.
From the corner of the garage.
Existing garage.
From the existing garage.
So a- all I'm saying is that if those are wetland flags, which in fact I, I assume they are. That the proposed activity. Uh, i- is going to require a permit from the Conservation Commission and. The applicant would be, you know, well advised to. Confirm that in fact those are. Wetland boundaries, as you can see here, that these look like wetland symbols. On, on the other side of the. Of the line and. Therefore, the, the well and the. Septic tank should be aware.
Right.
Uh, uh, of those wetland boundaries and inappropriate regulations for citing. Of other facilities.
Okay, yeah, absolutely, we can. I can, um, I know the.
Septic's gonna be on the other side.
I know the original design, this design that we're looking at. They are still. In business, they're still around, so I can actually call them up and clarify what the WF means, but.
It, it, it may well be explained in the, in the, uh, the notes. On the plan, um, which. I certainly can't read on, on this, but. It, it may indicate. What they are and who delineated them, et cetera.
Right, okay. Alright.
Do we need to ask if there's any public comment? Since this is a public hearing?
Roger, did you hear that?
So. Kind of finish some of our requirements here. We're limited to maximum of two bedrooms, so, um, if you're gonna have one and. And, uh, that would, uh, satisfy that requirement. The area of the accessory dwelling unit is twenty-four by. Is it twenty-four by thirty-six or something? Which I figured was nine hundred and sixty square feet.
Yes.
And the existing house is in the, uh. The property card here. I believe. So is listed as. Thirteen hundred and sixty-eight square feet.
Correct.
Which comes to about seventy percent of the existing house. So would you intend to be requesting a waiver of that? Forty percent limitation?
Yes.
Okay. Let's say just, uh. Formalize that to us in a, in an email or a note. Of that request, if members want to consider that, um, so I will. Uh, we do, you do meet the requirement of the entrance door not being visible from the street. On the side there. So at this point, I guess we will open it up to comments from, uh. Others in attendance. So if you want to, uh. I will, I guess, go through my screen here and see who was. Let the record note that Lindsay Butler is now. Entered the meeting. So, uh, let's see, is. Patient with me navigating Zoom here, we heard from Marshall. Does anyone else have a, like, make a comment? Do we have any butters? Hey, am I, I correct that there are no others listening to speak, so I can. Ask board members for their comments?
I don't have a, any objection to this, subject to them receiving the appropriate. Permits from the Board of Health and from the Conservation Commission. And, and providing you with the waiver.
Alright.
Start it, whatever it takes.
Okay, so I will. Make sure I'm doing this, Skip, you're my, my guide here on procedure. So if I'm going astray, let me know. So that will. Just close the, and the, uh. The input. At this point, we could, uh. Entertain a motion to. Prove the special permit subject to the conditions.
Uh, Roger, you gotta hold up there for a second.
Yep.
So if there's no more questions or testimony that's gonna be, um. Admitted by the applicant and there's no more questions from the public or from the board. You would then have to vote to close the public hearing before you could. Motion to, um, deliberate and approve any special permit, uh, being granted.
Okay.
Um, the only other thing I would say is, was there any other, um. Input received from any other boards or committees, uh, from the town?
There was from the, the Board of Health, which, um. They had referenced that their comments were. That either approved when their suggestions were.
I can, I can.
One bedroom, right, yeah, if you have, like, I, if you have that, that would be fine, yeah, go ahead.
Uh, okay, so there's two notes. One is in order to meet Title V requirements for a dwelling other than a single-family home. A two-compartment tank or tanks in series must be installed. Another option would be to install a fifteen hundred gallon septic tank. That would serve only the in-law apartment. Either option will require engineering and a permit from the Board of Health. Second note, the proposed den meets the definition of a bedroom per Title V. And would create a fourth bedroom. Unless a fully compliant four-bedroom septic system could be permitted. The floor plan needs to be altered to only have one room in the proposed in-law apartment, that meets the bedroom definition.
Hey, thank you. So if there's no further testimony, I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
So moved, are you, are seconded?
Seconded, okay, I will go by roll call, Richard Wright?
Yep.
Roger Hoyt, yes. Larry Boudreau?
Yes.
Walt Meisner?
Yes.
Hey, and, uh. So that will. We'll close the hearing. If someone can, uh. Just add the time, cause I'm not displaying it on my screen. Seven thirteen, thank you, and then, uh, so the motion to close the hearing carries. So now we, we can entertain a motion to. Approve the.
Motion to approve the special permit.
I'll second that.
With, of course, the deliberations that we talked about.
Yes, the, the conditions will be, uh, requesting a waiver for the. Area. A permit from the Board of Health. And, uh, you see, if you provided the letter, and so, um. So I'll do a roll call vote, uh, Richard Wright?
Yes.
Roger Hoyt, yes. Larry Boudreau?
Yes.
Walt Meisner?
Yes.
Yes, the motion carries. So I will, uh.
On your way.
Yes, yes. Thank you. Alright, so we'll get the, the letter with the conditions listed. Get those other requirements in and then you'll have your. In the letter, we'll say what you need to do for the timeframes for the, uh. Recording with the. Registry deeds.
Will that have the email I need to send, um? I need to send you an email or something, what was?
Yeah, I sent it to Heather.
Okay. Can do that.
Alright, thank you.
Alright.
Move on to the next item.
Thank you, mom.
You're welcome, thank you.
Have a good night.
Take care.
Alright, now we have. Scenic Road Special Permit. Russell Hill Road.
Yes.
There we go. This. Special Permit Hearing. Begin at, uh. Seven fifteen. We'll read the notice, Notice of Planning Board Hearing. Scenic Road Hearing twenty dash zero six Russell Hill Road. In accordance with the provisions of Chapter forty, Section fifteen C, Master and the laws, the planning board will hold a public hearing Zoom meeting on Wednesday, November eighteenth. Twenty twenty at six thirty. To consider the request of Jeffrey Collis, seven Cote Avenue, Ashman Ham for the construction of permanent entrance for driveway and access to lot twenty-five C, Russell's Road in Ashburn, Mass. identified in the town assesses. Maps, it's map thirty-three. Parcel twenty-five C. Public cameras required of Russell Hill Road is the designated scenic road. Copy the application and plan may be requested by contacting Land Use Office. Or calling the office at nine seven eight eight two seven four one hundred, extension one one seven, any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should link into this meeting. Or go to my town government Ashburn Ham Planning Board and find the link, Roger Hoyt Chairman, Ashburn Ham Planning Board. Was posted in the Gardener News Wednesday, November fourth. And Wednesday, November eleventh. And the chairman, note, note that the chairman read the. Notification, so at this point, so I'll take a roll call. Members present, Roger Hoyt, yes, Walt Meisner?
Yes.
Lindsay Butler?
Yes.
Larry Boudreau?
Yes.
Richard Wright?
Here.
William Nolan, Associate Member?
I'm here.
Yeah. Alright, uh, at this point, we'll take testimony, we'll hear from the applicant first, so you can unmute yourself, Jeff. And just, just lead me through what you want me to show here.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, yeah, um, we're just, we have, uh, an already existing entrance through the stone wall there, um. I included a few pictures and, and the map, I don't. I have a hard time seeing, excuse me, seeing it, but, um. Yeah, we're just. Building a house down there that we've gone through the, um. Motions for, I guess, and we're just, uh, requesting the scenic road permit to. Have that permit, uh, permanent driveway. Through the existing, uh, stone wall, there are a few trees on either side of the existing entrance that, um. We would request cutting down. For safe access and visibility to the road, but no stones need to be, um. Uh, in, removed or, or altered in order to access the field where we're planning on building the house.
I'm taking an attempt to rotate it here.
What's, what's the address on Russell Hill Road?
Well, we've been calling it seventy, but we haven't gone through the planning board or, I guess, I don't know what the process is for getting the actual number, but Heather. Told me we're on the list of getting the actual number, we put up a little sign that says seventy as a marker. So when, when we, uh, direct people to meet us there, like a few contractors and stuff like that, we just tell them to look for seventy, cause it comes after. My uncle's driveway sixty, right down the road.
Yeah, I think we. I think we gave you sixty-six.
Okay, alright, we'll get that sign remade.
Alright, nice.
It's, it's, I think it's in the minutes of our twenty-eighth meeting. We'll just confirm that.
Yep. So, yeah, that, that actually is. So yeah, that actually is one of the trees with the signage on it there, the the seventy, which will be a sixty six, but that's one of the trees that we would request taking down, leaving the stump, but just taking down for visibility up the road. And then there's one or one or two trees on the other side also.
A dead one.
And yeah, one of them is actually dead. Yeah, yeah, you can see it better from there. But as you can see, the entrance, there's no stones to be removed. The driveway will just be built through there.
Just remind you, you also need permission from the Board of Selectmen to remove the trees.
Okay.
Is there any other to your?
You, can you just say again how many trees you're expecting to take down?
I think it's total of including the dead one four, but there's three others, but one of them's dead and it should be taken down just as a matter of safety. If it's not us, it'll be the light department soon, I'm sure, because I think it's, you know, gonna gonna fall down or, you know, eventually fall down, but there's three other live, excuse me, trees on either side that we don't need to remove for actually physically getting into the property. It's just a matter of safe access to see up and down the road. You know, we are made aware of the contractor after I put this permit in. You know, to to bring it up at the meeting because you know, it would provide safe access in the future of being able to see traffic on that section of the road.
It has, it is a scenic road. One of the issues with scenic roads is they want scenic roads to be tree lined roads. So would there be any plan to replace trees that you take down?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. We have a lot of plans on landscaping and other trees.
Yeah, apple trees.
You know, just, just, you know, positions in a in the future, you know, with respect to being able to see the road, you know?
That's good, but I'm only concerned with the trees that are along the road. And because those are the ones that, you know, give it the scenic road character.
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, there's, there's, we got, there's about four hundred feet of frontage of, you know, other, you know, beautiful trees and certainly would, you know, be willing to add to it if we could do it in a way. And I think there would be space further down from where these existing trees are, which we're, you know, we'd like to remove, but further down a little bit, there would be space to, you know, plant some some trees that would be even at, you know, full, once they're fully grown, they'd be positioned in a way that wouldn't obstruct, you know, safe entrance and exit of the driveway.
You know, Roger, from my point of view, I have no no objection except that I haven't seen it, so I can't comment on whether a tree should come down or a tree should be put with someplace else. But, you know, in the spirit that we need to be you know, mindful of the spirit of the scenic road by law that, you know, unless a tree absolutely has to come down because it's in, you know, dead or diseased or actually is a hazard, I would, you know, urge the applicant not to take it down and to supplement any trees that they take down with new trees that are along that road, but otherwise, as my position on the board would have no objection to. We also technically should, as it, as this is a scenic road hearing, we should have had the tree warden here. The tree warden should be telling us whether the tree is in fact dead, you know, and is in fact in need of coming down. But that's a procedural thing that we haven't been too good at following.
The in our or by species of trees and such, so refer to that. So I would say that my count would be that you know, we play same number of.
Are you waking up Roger again?
He couldn't hear you.
Yeah, Roger looks like he's frozen.
Yeah, I have an unstable internet connection, but that would be my my comment would be that we place the equal number with a, if if possible.
Yeah, definitely.
Absolutely.
Species at locations to be.
We should actually, Matt, did you say this has to go to the Board of Selectmen for the approval of the removal of the trees? Right, because I've been confused about with in recent correspondences about the scenic by law.
Marshall, can you, I think it was either you or Lorraine head forwarded it from in relation to other applicants, but also the requirements of the town by law that the Board of Selectmen need to give approval for moving a tree?
Yeah. I should have introduced myself earlier. Marshall Dennis, Chair of the Conservation Commission. First of all, I want to indicate that that the commission has reviewed this plan and previously issued in order of conditions approving it. There are going to be in addition to the driveway related trees to be removed, a few other retreat trees near the proposed septic system that are going to come down in as much as they pose a you know, a threat to the structural integrity of the system. And again, we've approved all of that. The question really becomes whether or not the trees to be removed are quote, street trees and whether they're subject to the approval of as part of the the scenic road by law.
Which applies forever to either the the tree itself or the branches that are in the public way.
No, it's a question whether the trees are in the quote, public right of way, in which case there needs to be, if they are per state law, there needs to be a public notice and public hearing which I've been involved in in the past in other towns, which indicates the species and the diameter, you know, size of the trees and you know, certain things that certain procedures that should have been followed on other properties, but that's really what it comes down to is whether or not these are within the public right of way and therefore constitute public shade trees. But again, that that's part and parcel of the the scenic road permanent application process. Specifically.
Correct.
If I, if I, if you just again, I apologize, but section seven point three of the scenic road rules and regs deal with the public shade tree law consolidated public hearing, meaning consolidated with the scenic road public hearing. So. So specifically, I mean, in in reality, the species of trees and number thereof and size thereof should have been if this was a consolidated public hearing, should have been incorporated within the public notice.
So Roger, was there an issue with the public notice?
My internet connection is not working well, so Richard, I'm gonna pass the gavel on to you to as vice chairman.
I I I don't understand what's going on here with the trees and whatnot, because if there's a tree issue, it should be the tree warden in our in our meeting, not not conservation, not Board of Health, not anybody else. It should be the tree warden. And that's what I'm getting confused with here.
Yeah, I I agree. I just feel like we're kind of I I mean, if there if there was something with it advertised wrong, then we need to deal with that now.
Unfortunately, that's not the case. The scenic road scenic road rules and regulations, section seven point three, public shade tree law consolidated public hearing. Per state law define finds all trees within the public way or on the boundaries thereof as public shade trees. When a public hearing must be held pursuant to state law, prior to the cutting or removal of a tree, such hearings shall be consolidated into a single public hearing before the tree warden and planning board. Notice of the public hearing, which will shall include the size, type and location of the trees to be cut or removed shall be given by publication or newspaper of general circulation in the town of Ashburn, town of Ashburn. Once each of two successive weeks.
Yeah.
Blah, 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 blah. The required timelines for a public hearing, et cetera, et cetera. So in other words, it is pertinent to the planning board rules and regulations, not the tree wardens.
Yeah, but the hearing is supposed to include the tree warden.
Exactly.
Which is, which is what it is. May I ask the applicant this? You can tell me. Are you under any time constraints right here now?
Yes.
Yes, definitely.
Extreme time constraints.
Yeah.
Meaning that you have a contractor that's ready to cut the trees down and get going.
Oh.
Well, yeah, basically, yeah, you know, we're very, we need to get going. Yeah.
Drive was going to be in all of that.
Okay. So we understand that your application here is for the driveway, which
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Currently at that location. In your pictures, you showed vehicles in there.
Yep, 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 yeah, I mean, it's, it's.
We drive in there all the time.
If anybody drove by, you it would look like, aside from the fact that it's grass, you know, it's a pretty permanent entrance. It has been for decades.
Right, but it's picture that's there, which tree is it that's blocking the driveway?
Well, there's none actually blocking the driveway.
Getting out of the driveway safely.
Just, just the, the, you know, a clearer visibility up and down the road, which is really not a hindrance to getting vehicles in there. Like, we can, we could do without that if this is going to be, you know, it's just a matter of while we're sitting down and talking about a scenic road permit, you know?
If you're going to have to remove trees for the septic system, are those in the in the right of way that they'd be applicable?
I'm sorry, the the trees that we requested to have removed are on the edge of the field. They're not need to, they don't need to be removed to install the septic system. I don't think you can see them from the the pictures. They're just.
They're not on the public way. They're they're not, they're not.
No, no.
No, okay.
They're not jurisdiction of this is.
Okay.
No.
The only thing we care about are the trees that are on on the road in the public way.
Right, right.
And right now, there doesn't need to be any trees cut down in order for you to access the property.
Correct.
Okay, so you can access the property and you can do your work. You have to, you know, even with us recommending this, you know, we would recommend it to the Board of Selectmen if I'm understanding you write Roger. And then they they grant the special permit. Is that true?
From what I can see, they don't have anything
Okay.
to do with a special permit. It's it's just that they also need to approve it.
Then can I, can I offer the the suggestion? Oh, I, Marshall wants to raise his hand.
Go ahead, Marshall.
Marshall raises his hand.
Yeah.
He'll probably contradict me.
No, I will not. I just to make life simple, in fact, the the scenic road rules and regs state that the decision of the planning board pursuant pursuant to the scenic roads law shall contain a condition that no work should be done until the applicant has complied with all the provisions of state law, meaning the public shade tree law. So you know, all of the things being considered, you know, pursuant to your decision making process on scenic roads, it seems to me that you could proceed to approve the the application and just simply have a condition that, you know, assuming this public shade tree law applies, that the applicant will comply with it prior to, you know, any further actions.
That sounds ambiguous.
And the planning board approval, the planning board approval does not imply consent of the tree ward and vice versa.
Okay.
Well, I'm I'm just saying that you know, you you can proceed to approve it pending, you know, the applicant may or may not have to come back before you and the tree warden if, in fact, the public shade tree law applies. But as for the scenic road permit, it seems you can feel free to go ahead and approve it.
So Roger, I don't have a problem with this, and I think, you know, they said they're going to plant a couple more trees, so I'd like to make a motion to approve this.
I'll second that motion, will you?
Hey.
And I totally agree with it. It's the path of trees you need to plant to make it work worthwhile.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve this with the the condition that an equal number of trees are planted.
Yes.
Okay, do a roll call vote. Lindsay Butler?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Walt?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
And myself, yes. With the conditions of as outlined in the bylaw.
Thank you.
All right, well, actually, I should have closed the public hearing first, so we'll do that. We'll have a motion to, I have a motion to close the public hearing. For a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion on board to close the public hearing. And we'll go through the roll call vote. Roger Hoyt, yes. Richard Wright?
Yes.
Larry Boudreau?
Yes.
Walt Meisner?
Yes.
And Lindsay Butler?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so the testimony is closed at six thirty, seven thirty nine. So now we'll make the motion approve the scenic road permit with the condition of trees in and so approval from the tree warden, the Board of Selectmen and
You're breaking up, Roger.
You're still frozen, bud.
Richard, why don't you just take over and basically, we already did the motion and we closed the hearing. We just did it out of order. So.
That's okay.
I feel like we covered ourselves.
Yeah, I agree.
It's all in a minute, so I think we're covered with all of it and with the rep planting of trees or take down what needs to be done, but I think we definitely need to. But I think we definitely need to discuss from now on, we have a scenic road application, we definitely need to have the tree warden involved.
I agree. I mean, it's not fair to the applicants to show up and that we're disorganized or have questions or, or issues, so I apologize to the applicants.
And it's all, it all has to do with the trees and we shouldn't be dealing with that. That's not our problem. It's the tree warden. We need him here.
Yep.
I mean, yes, I agree completely. We are disorganized. So you had to move us on to the next one, Richard?
As I, yes, definitely. Well, I think we have everything covered and it's all in the minutes and we need to move forward and keep going.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jamie's been waiting patiently for this next agenda item. Eddie can't wait.
Yes. All right, we have those present. Let me just get the application present here. Continue of the public hearing that question, scenic road permit.
We reopen the continuing.
Roger's frozen again.
We open, we reopen the continuing, continuation of the scenic road special permit for Wilker Road. So I, I, I have, I, I don't think we have to reread the notice and all of that because that was done at the original opening. And so are you on now, Roger?
I'm still on sort of here. I'm going to go through our previous meeting and open the application again. I think we have. All right, did we do a roll call vote of who's present?
And do we really have to?
I'm here.
I'm here.
We'll do it. Who was here last time? Walt Meisner?
Here.
Richard Wright?
Here.
Roger Hoyt, yes. Lindsey Butler?
Yes.
Larry Boudreaux?
Here.
Okay. All right, so.
It's 7:43.
Yeah, we can invite the applicant or their representative, Jamie, and then while I'll get the drawing open here.
So Roger, if you wouldn't mind sharing the screen, I can certainly put up the plans again and then go through them one more time if you'd like. That's up to you.
Certainly, certainly. That will clear things up.
Yep.
I think you should be able to share, but.
Nope, not yet.
Share screen.
Roger, I think you click on his picture and it'll bring up a Dropbox that says.
All right, let's see. There he is.
You did it successfully last meeting.
I know. I think you should be. All right, who can share? There we go. Go ahead, Jamie. You should be all set.
Fantastic. Can everybody, can everybody see the screen?
Yep.
Excellent, excellent. So this is Jamie Rowe from Woodman and Bingham Associates. And as you know, my client this evening is Rick and Margaret Sisson. Property location, just so everybody refamiliarizes themselves. Wilker Road, this is the Sisson property on the right side of Wilker. This is the Sisson property on the left. These two lots right here, 14B and 14C, are subject to this application before the planning board. And we had a site walk a week or so ago to view where the driveway, driveways were proposed for both lots. We looked in this, this is lot number one. We looked in this area right here, and then we looked in this area right here for lot two. If you remember, lot two was a shared driveway scenario where the driveway came up and it came into the lot. I didn't hear any objections or, or really comments from anybody when we had the site walk. But I did tell the board that if the board was uncomfortable with the driveway located within the easement for lot number two, we'd be happy to move it on the right side and come up and then redesign it. And we put the driveway on the right side, not where the easement was. That's, that's absolutely on the table if that's what the board wants. The Sissons are agreeable to that, so I'll, I'll leave it up to the board. If you didn't like the location here, we'll move it over here for lot two. But I'll show you lot number one again. Lot number one, this is the property line between Sisson and I believe Welsh. Driveways coming up into a house, system in the front, well in the back. I guess if we can take each lot separately, one on one, we can talk about each lot before we go to the other. I think that'd be preferable. So do you have any questions on lot number one? When you view the location of the proposed driveway, please remember, we did discuss removing the stone wall where the driveway is going into the lot. And then we have two options. We can, we can take these stones, pile them on each side of the driveway, and then reinforce the wall on each side, or we can take the stones and fill in the gap down here in the left, lower left. Either way is acceptable to us. It's up to the board.
The question I have on this one, Jamie, is was, I think, well, first, I have a general question before we get into the lot by lot. Is, were Marshall's written comments shared with you?
No.
They have not been?
No.
I think, I think that would be very important, Roger, to share them with Jamie, because there are a lot of questions that Marshall raised that I think are valid. And I was basically gonna, you know, ask, you know, you, Jamie, to respond to that. But since you haven't seen it, you can't respond to it. My only issue with this lot was, you know, was the concern expressed over the elevation change on the right at that particular location and, and how that would be done. Because it seems to me you'd probably have to dig pretty deep into the bank and really change the topography at that in order to make that driveway work. Am I wrong there?
Well, we show the proposed grades on the plan. Here's a 222 contour, so it's a two-foot cut right here. It's a three-foot cut right here. So two to three, two to three foot cut coming into the lot. And, and then it basically returns the grade. Probably about 75 feet into the lot. So it's not, it's not a very big cut, Walt.
Okay.
No.
I think it looked bigger Walt while we were there, just because of the stone wall and the.
Yeah, yeah, you're probably right.
It was built up. I mean, I think if they take the remaining and move it down to that open area, I think it'd make the wall look really nice.
Yeah, I think so too.
I think it would work out really good.
Yeah, I can't, I can't object to that. Now, I know that that comments that we got from public was asking the question, why not have the driveway come through the wall opening? But in my opinion, and my only opinion, is, is that I, I, I don't, I really don't want to try to design it for the applicant. The applicant has a preference for doing that, and I can't come up with a, a good reason not to allow them to do what they want to do, so long as they take special care to fill in that opening and make it a continuous wall.
And if I'm not mistaken, when we did just do that site visit, when the opening there that they want to do, there was a couple old stumps that they wanted to take out. I think would make the whole thing look better.
Yep. And we did, and we did say, and we did make the comment, once the driveway is in, if you want a couple of trees planted over there, again, happy to do that as well.
Yeah, I think my comment on the location would be that from a scenic appearance, the view would be less interrupted by a driveway if it's where it's shown here than if it's more towards out into the field.
I agree.
It's more hidden by where it, on the right-hand side of the drawing here, leaving the more open area unobstructed. If we're just talking about the, you know, here or one place or the other, be it's less intrusive to the scenic view if it's on the location they proposed.
Yeah, and I, I applaud the applicant for trying to replace some of the trees that have been cut down inadvertently. I don't know if it was very inadvertently, but it was cut, they were cut down.
Yep. Yeah, that, that activity was not, not my client.
Yep.
Nor was the, the culvert crossing
Right.
under the road.
I think the, so do we have a consensus of the committee on, on lot number one?
I, I agree. I agree with what you said, Walt. That's where they have a preference. I mean, there's, there's still maintaining scenic, scenic road act and I'm good with it.
All right, Jamie, as, as far as the, the correspondent we received this week, I can forward that to you now.
Please. Yep.
So if you want to continue with discussion while I send these out to you.
So, so you want to, so we pretty much all set with lot number one?
Yes.
Okay. Lot number two. This is the locust plant for lot number two. Lot number two is to the left of lot number one. We set up, as you know, an easement for a common driveway. The driveway we're proposing right now is coming up the middle of the easement. Driveway is gonna swing into the proposed house location in this location right here. And this is this is where we proposed the driveway. When we went out here to take a look at it, we did see the, the culvert. If I can blow it up. Here we go. We did see a culvert underneath Wilker. We did see a pipe coming from the field. We all talked about taking that driveway, moving it to the right a little bit, and then coming in. And I did mention to everybody that was on Wilker for the site walk, if in fact, you do not agree with this location, we're happy to move it to the right side of lot number two as well. It's entirely up to the board. The applicant, Richard and Margaret, Margaret Sisson would like it here. But after the site walk, we had a nice conversation and they said they'd be happy to move it to the right side of the lot as well. So it's entirely up to the board. We did view both locations when we did, when we did have the site walk. And.
My question, can I ask a question, Jamie?
Sure.
I know it's not supposedly not the planning in the future, but you, you were talking about a common driveway that possibly in the future, you could put another house on the back lot or where that driver would be used for both houses to exit onto the road.
Right.
So, but if you move the driveway over to the right for this house, in the future, are you gonna need to put another driveway in?
So the, the, the thought process was to utilize this area for the driveway for lot number two. And then in the future, if the Sissons decide to subdivide their lands into additional A and R lots in the back, this would be, this would be the common driveway. So we just have one curb cut, not three. That, that's our intent. There was some talk at the last meeting of, of, of a potential roadway. That's not our intention. Although there were other comments made and listings made in the past, that's not our intention today. So I can't speak to what happened in the past and I was not involved in that. But our intention is to utilize this road as a common drive, this driveway as a common driveway for lot two, and then potentially two other A and R lots in the future. But that's in the future. You have to come back to the planning board with an A and R plan, back to the planning board for another road opening permit or scenic drive, scenic road permit. Because this permit would be issued for one house, not three, right? So we'd have to go through that process all over again.
I agree with that.
Yep. And we have to get a, a common driveway special permit from the planning board as well, a completely different permitting process.
I totally agree with that. I, I think we should make one curb cut in, toward the future. If you need to use it for more, that would be fine. We could address that at a later date. But right now, we just have one curb cut and not a future cuts.
I agree.
Well, one, I, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna sort of take the other stance, because as I've thought through this, I, I sort of prefer the one lot, one driveway strategy that the Sissons are now open to considering. As Jamie pointed out, and here's my rationale. One of the things that's controversial about this one, Jamie, is your clients have actually, and it's, I just checked it before we opened this meeting today. You know, it's on Realtor.com that this is gonna be developed into an eight housing complex. It's still there. So it, you know, when the, you know, the, the, when others look at this, and this is where we've gotten the negative comments on this from, from Marshall and from Lorraine and from others. It's, this is a common right, you know, is it gonna be a subdivision or is it not gonna be a subdivision? Isn't it gonna be a common driveway, you know? And just by having it being a common driveway off of that, while I would prefer one cut and not have two cuts there, in, in there, it seems to me that at this particular stage in the gate day, the simpler and more direct thing is each lot has a driveway. It has the frontage off of, off the road. And it, and it can be sort of a more director, direct break in the, in the wall. And I don't have the objection of trying to micromanage the designer as to where you put that driveway. As long as you replace, you know, you do it strategically and you fill in the gaps in the wall and you keep the, the wall there. But that would be just, I'm only one person on this board, but that's how I'm kind of reacting to it. Because we need to, as a planning board, and this has nothing to do with your proposal, Jamie, as a planning board, one of the things in my one year being here, I'm, we're not thinking holistically about planning solutions and about how it's going. We're getting things coming to us in these piecemeal fashions. And we're never really informed about what the big picture is. And that, as a planning board, I think we need to care about that. And it's sort of simpler, each lot and, and one driveway. And, and that would be my counter argument to, to what was proposed.
So my, my attitude is and always will be, Walt, that compromise plays a big role in, in permitting. And like, like, like after the meeting we had on site, had a nice conversation with Rick and Margaret. And again, they said, go to the meeting, offer the two locations and ask the board what would they like. So on the right side of lot number two or in the location we propose is fine with the Sissons. So have the discussion with the board and we'll, we'll do exactly what you want us to do. have the discussion with the board and we'll, we'll do exactly what you want us to do in the location. Doesn't matter to us.
I also want to bring up one thing else before I pass the baton and and that is one of the thing, when you read Marshall's comments, he brings up several very reasonable discrepancies in the way the application came forward and the common driveway complicates it. If you have the one and the two lots, it's, it's a pretty simple thing. So I think there's I think the board needs to consider those issues that were raised.
So if.
You need a chance to respond to it.
Yeah, so if if Marshall's comments are centered on the common driveway and yours are centered on the common driveway, I just got the email. Then we can put the driveway on the right hand side and have and have the driveway serviced just lot number two. And like I told you in the past, we will, if we, if we do a common driveway in future development, we have to come back to you for other permits. So we'll do that at that time. So why don't we just take the common driveway scenario, so to speak, off the table and just put a separate driveway on the right hand side of lot two. That's fine.
Well, I would support that, but I I let my other colleagues, they, they were leaning the other way. So I should shut up and maybe they'll, maybe they'll feel differently, but that's the way I I felt about it.
Yep.
So Walt, I, no, I appreciate what Walt had to say and I get it, and especially when planning and bigger picture, but for me personally, it's like we need to look at what's in front of us now. And when we're talking about planning that in the bigger picture, well, that's where our bylaws and our regulations come into place. So personally, I don't think we can kind of pick and choose what projects we want to. You know, just say, well, down the road, we really don't want a development there. I mean, that's, that's what our bylaws and our regs are for.
Well, we're not saying that. We're not saying you don't want a development there. We're just saying we don't know what's going to be there.
No, but we don't. But all we know is what's in front of us and it's for a common drive, for the, for the shared driveway and I, we just need to go on what's in front of us right now. We can't think about what's down the road. That, that part of thinking is that's for our planning and that's for our bylaws and our regulations. That's where that comes into play.
And I'll add to that because of the fact that the driveway they're asking for with it is a shared drive, they're calling it a shared driveway. But the whole thing is, we have that, that drainage, it runs right through the middle of it. So there's no way they're going to be able to make that a road without doing a lot of work. So to get the driveway in, I think that's the best cut because it's already there for the shared driveway.
So in the future, just again, just in the future, if for lot number two, the way it's designed and submitted to you now and it's on the screen. I believe your bylaw allows for three homes on a shared driveway. Is that correct? I think, I think it does. So this lot two would be one, and then we would do two additional homes in the future, if that's what they decided to do. If we, again, if we take the driveway, put it on the right side of lot number two. And, and they, they, they sell lot number two, somebody builds a house, which is great. If if the citizens decide to do additional development with a shared driveway at this location, we would come in and go through the process again for three lots, not two.
We're not discussing that right now, though. Correct? We're discussing one driveway shared to one lot.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
They're and they're offering the option of this one driveway shared to just one of potentially three lots or a driveway that goes just to that lot.
So do we want three curb cuts for a proposed maybe down the road? Or do we want one curb cut?
Yeah, so I I think down the road, Richard, if we, if we do, if, let's, let's put it this way, if we if we move the driveway to the right side of lot number two, right, and have lot two have its own driveway on its own lot without an easement. If the systems do any additional development, we'll be back for a shared driveway, one curb cut for two or three lots in the back. So I heard a lot of comments at the last public hearing and on site about this common driveway. Our intention was to be upfront and honest about the shared driveway. That's good planning from our point of view and for our client, but if there's, if there's a problem, I shouldn't say a problem, if, if it's causing some heartache here with respect to future development. Again, we have no issues putting the driver in the right side of lot two and and to be honest with you, if that takes care of Walt, your, your issues with the project and and Marshall Dennis, I've known Marshall for many years. If he has a problem with that too, we'll move it to the right, not a problem. So.
I have no problem with it either. I really don't have a problem with it. I'm just trying to keep as less curb cuts as possible.
Yep, yep. And and still, if we did future development, we would be minimizing the curb cuts if we did a common driveway as well. So I think it's meeting everybody's, everybody's concerns. But that's a future permit, future public hearing that we have to go through. So bottom line is, why don't we just take the common driveway concept off the table and put the driveway on the right side of lot two? We looked at that location that we, that we were proposing. Do you guys have any issues with where we proposed it on, in the field?
I don't.
I'd say we, we just have the same conditions, no matter where it goes of opening a wall, repairing the other area. Dealing with the drainage swell.
Replacing trees that have been cut.
It, it's just a matter of of where rather than any, any change in the scope.
I, I agree, and we need to think about what's in front of us right now, not coulda, woulda, what's going to be, because we don't know. And it's like, what's, what's the best for right, for right now, for what they're proposing right now?
Yep, so let, let, let me. Yeah, so let me, let me just modify the request for lot number two and propose the driveway location to the right side of lot number two. And that's going to be located in this area right here, right? That's where we looked. So why don't I, why don't I propose that? If, if the board wants a new plan drawn, I'm happy to come back to the next meeting with that plan. Show you the location on the plan view and have you voted at that point. I don't think that should hold up lot number one, but I'm happy to come back for lot number two, showing you a new plan.
I would agree with that, that we should see the exact location in relation to existing trees. If there are there, we did not look at that. Did we look at that location specifically out there?
Yep.
And it was, it was.
Yep.
Yeah, I think you.
Stakes there.
Yep, we did.
Now, before I make a motion, Roger, do we have to open this up for public comment? And since Marshall's, whom we've been talking about, but he has been staying quiet in the background. Should we open it up to public comment and allow people to comment on what we're, what we're leaning towards doing?
Yes. We're still in that process. So Marshall, if you had any further comments on?
It's been so difficult.
I bet.
However, I, I, I would agree with, with Walters and Jamie's recommendation that the, the access be moved onto lot two specifically, and that the subject of the, the common driveway be, you know, relegated to a future consideration. I, I think that would simplify matters because, you know, as I pointed out in my commentary, and you know, I'll rest my case with that, you know, it speaks for itself that. You know, and again, I've explained my rationale for the changes to the access to lot one slash fourteen B. But I really think that a separate and standalone access to lot two would be best and you know, we'll, we'll save the, the common driveway for future consideration. So I would be in favor of that.
Yeah, Marshall, I just want to clarify what you're, you're speaking on your own behalf as a butter and neighbor rather than a for the board.
Yeah, I, I am. I, I've had no consultation with the other members of the Conservation Commission regarding any of this. I would only point out as I did in my most recent, you know, formal filing that if, in fact, the driveway occurs within, you know, again, as chairman of the planning board, that if the access onto lot two occurred within 100 feet of the culvert, then you know, it would require a permit from the Conservation Commission, but I, I, I think everybody realizes that that's, you know, an obvious conclusion. So.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
All right, just to clarify, define things here. So we are number one. We are, have, have debated what's proposed and it doesn't involve cutting any trees, just replacing stones. Is, is that true, Jamie?
So we didn't propose to cut any trees for lot number one. I think there was a stump there as well. So we said, we said, however, once the driveway is installed, we would take the stones from that area, we fill in the gap down here, and then we would plant a couple of trees in the tree location could be in the, in the public way within the layout of Wilker Road or on private property. That's entirely up to the board. Doesn't matter.
And, and then on the other lot?
So, so on the other lot, this is lot number two. So on this lot right here, I modified the request and to go away from the common driveway location and put that driveway on the right side of lot number two. We looked at that location as well. Same conditions apply for that, for that location. I'm happy to modify the plan and submit it to the board for your file or submit it to the board for a continued public hearing next month, entirely up to you. But we did locate, we did, we did inspect this location when we had our sidewalk.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, Roger, if I may, I, I, first off, I, I'd like to make a motion to that we approve the proposal for lot one as proposed.
Okay, just to note, we have to close the hearing first.
And I make a motion that we close the hearing.
Thank you. A second?
Wait, yeah, but hold on. Sorry, I don't think you can, because this is all together as one application, correct?
Yes.
So you can't close the motion. If he's going to submit something new, once you close it, that's it. We can't take anything else in. So I wouldn't.
In that case, should we?
We move to continue the hearing.
Correct, but will we, yes, we need to move to continue the hearing in its entirety. So the next meeting, once new stuff is submitted, then we can vote on lot one and lot two, but since it, it's one application, we can't close a part of it.
So my, so my recommendation to the board would be, if, if you so chose, would be to close the public hearing in its entirety, vote to approve lot one and lot two. The condition for lot two would be subject to receiving a revised site plan showing the revised location to the right side of lot two as witnessed and inspected in the field during the sidewalk. Then you can close the public hearing and vote on both, and then I will show up to the next meeting with the revised plan.
I like the way you're thinking, Jamie. Do you think that's okay, Lindsay? You know, you think better than I.
I'd be honest, I, I wouldn't do it. I would just rather see the plan. If we're going to wait for a revised plan, I want to see the revised plan before.
Okay.
We've.
And I, I just I just, hey, and I think you're involved with this also on, on High Street. That one involves the same applicant for the hearing on December ninth.
Yep.
So they're going to be here anyway, or dear representatives. Even though that's not related to this matter, it's just the same applicant.
Yep.
For scheduling.
So again, as far as I'm concerned, you know, you could do it either way, and either way is acceptable to me. So you want to continue everything until next meeting and we'll wrap this lot one and lot two up at the next meeting. That's fine. Not a problem.
I, 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 my suggestion is that's the best way to do it.
Okay, well, then that's the way we'll do it.
So could I have him, have, have a motion to continue the hearing?
I'm moved.
A second? Okay, all right. So we will continue hearing to November nine, December nine. So I take a roll call vote, Richard?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Walt?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
And Roger Hoyt, yes. So the motion carries.
All right, guys. Have a great night.
Thank you, Jamie.
Bye bye.
Thank you.
All right, so this is continued at twenty sixteen. Eight six.
Roger?
Is Roger available?
You got a ways to go here.
I think you might need to take over, Rich. I'm here.
No, I'm, I'm here. I'm just trying to
Okay.
Manipulate Zoom here and documents. All right. So we have a special permit here in Common Old County Road. Old County Road. The Ashburn Planning Board will hold a pub.
Larry, you may need to read this again.
All right, the Ashburn Ham Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, November eighteenth at approximately seven PM at a Zoom meeting as prescribed in the zoning act, chapter forty-eight of the Mass General Laws on the application of Greenstone Realty LLC for a special permit for section five point one four of the Ashburn Ham zoning bylaw for a common driveway on property located on Old County Road, map twenty parcel twelve. Lots one A and one B in the RB zoning district, residential business. That's as far as I can see.
Can you see the rest of it here?
I cannot.
Yeah.
That's very strange.
A copy of the application and plan may be inspected at the Ashburn Ham Land Use Office by appointment. Eight two seven forty one hundred, extension one one seven, or at mytowngovernment.org. Any person interested in wishing to be heard on the application should appear at this time and place designated. Which is what we're listening to right now.
Richard, you want to take over?
I don't know what to do here. I mean, really, I don't.
The applicant here?
Mark Popham, representing Greenstone Realty.
Okay, you've been waiting a long time, so.
Oh, yeah.
And Mark, Mark Josh Olson here, Greenstone Realty, the owner of it, also online.
Thank you. Mark, do you want to present what you, what you'd like to do?
Yeah. Sure. Basically, Greenstone Realty retained me to prepare site plans and septic plans.
And septic plans for lots one A and one B. And uh, the, the two abutting lots uh have individual septic systems. And wells, but there's a, uh, an existing cart road. That essentially runs from Old County Road up through lot one A. And then takes a brief turn into lot one B. Uh, with the majority of what could be a common, what would be a common driveway in lot one A. Uh, the, the principal reason for using that uh common driveway is it, it. It essentially overlays and a, a pretty good, pretty good condition. Uh, existing cart road that uh runs through there now. Uh, wouldn't, wouldn't involve taking out any, any stone walls or trees. Um, at the public way and uh could essentially follow. Uh, in the general grade up into the uh, what we, what I would call the plateau of the two lots. Where the house, houses are being constructed and the wells are being constructed. And the lot one B septic system is up on that plateau. Uh, at the same time, the common, along the common driveway in lot one. Uh, it also allows for a uh, a septic tank effluent pipe. To ca- to go down uh to the, the lot one A septic's uh leach field. That is essentially a little over a hundred feet off of Old County Road. Where the successful um soil evaluations were performed in two thousand nineteen. So the uh, the common, common drive essentially serves, serves as, as uh, um, two roles. On that property. A reason uh for the common drive is uh, it, it. It already includes essentially a cutback to, to maintain a fairly steady grade. Throughout the driveway, whereas if we were to develop a, a, a separate driveway for lot B. Uh, it would involve quite a bit of uh filling and cutting of existing slopes there. And the common driveway would, would avoid that uh, that um, extensive disturbance.
Roger, you here?
Are you, are you seeing my screen or are you seeing uh Mark's screen?
Seeing your screen.
Okay, as I'm scrolling through the plans here and the application. Okay, um. I did note that uh, the driveway has been staked out. Um, and I, I do see what you're saying, how it follows the current path, which follows the, the natural.
Grade.
Just slope. Um, so that's really evident with the way you had it staked out. It's four hundred feet long as far as the common portion?
Uh, yes, approximately four hundred feet.
Hearing. As far as the other requirements, the uh. Proposed easements and such drafts of those, are those uh, been submitted or that's?
Yeah. Josh, Josh, here, yes, those have been submitted. Yes, they have.
Okay. Right, are there any, uh, do you have any further to add or should we open, open up to uh comments from? Others in attendance?
These were, uh, these septic's have been up by the uh, the Michelle Baller Health, correct?
Yes, they, they have been approved.
Yeah.
Based on my understanding of what's required, Roger, I have no objections to this.
Okay. Uh, any other comments?
I don't have any objections either.
Excuse me, I'm in a butter. Hey, could I?
Yes, could you identify yourself?
Sure, Phil Gayen, thirty eighth center. And in a way, we could see something on your screen that shows where the, the septic's are being cited on the, on the parcel and also where the houses are.
Sure, uh, Mark, I'll scroll through. You tell me where to stop here.
You're not on the screen right now. You have to reshare your screen.
I do, okay, we uh, thank you. Okay, let's scroll through here. Okay, so I'll just enter right here. Old County Road and Center Street is out in, on the right hand side of the map here. So looking at it. Right, Center Street. Hey. Is that good, Mark?
Okay, there, there you go. All right, this uh, you're on the left hand side of your, your drawing. Uh, you see the uh leach field for lot one A. And it's uh down, uh, there's a, there's an area of that lot. Uh, that was apparently excavated at, at some point. And what we're essentially doing in that area is uh developing the leach field there. Uh, the testing was good in that area. We're, we're essentially filling that, that area. There's a bowl in there that's going to be essentially restored, uh, almost to original grade along the side of that driveway. And then the, the sewer from the septic tank of the house is uh beyond the top of your screen. Uh, where the driveway splits uh left and right with the right going to um, the house. And leach, leaching area of lot one B. Uh, just in the um, where the driveway continues straight to the right. Just below that in grade where your, your hand is right now is the leaching area. And septic tank for the house at lot one B. And the house for lot one A, uh, if you came back to the driveway and went straight. Uh, to the top of your, the edge of your drawing, you'll see the house for lot one A and the septic tank there. And the sewer line or effluent line from the septic tank comes down and follows. The inside or uphill edge of that driveway down to the uh leaching area that I first described for, for lot one B.
Hey, so Mark, if I'm following it correctly, it's here, down the driveway, this way, and then down to.
And then down, down to here, yes.
And the. Well.
Yep.
Say that the uh, the septic approval is, is not related to the common driveway. But uh, as far as where the location and how the common driveway works, it's indicated and dictates where the septic goes that. Would be relevant.
Yes.
Okay, and where are the houses being cited?
The, the houses are up at the top of your drawing. They're sent, they're essentially, the nearest one is about three hundred twenty-five feet. From Old County Road and that would be the lot one B house. And the lot one A house is to the left of that and further back about another hundred feet.
Is there plans for more houses on that parcel? Because the parcel is fairly large.
No, my understanding that um, J- Josh can clarify this. But I believe that the, the splitting of this parcel into the two lots. Created the frontages and other setbacks. That are now designed that would really take, take away the ability to do that.
If I just add, at a recent meeting, we, you submitted the, the A and R to the divided, is that, is that correct?
That's, that's correct.
We're clashing, correct?
Yes, in fact, uh, the, the board of health, the board of health uh would not approve. The two septic designs without proof that the A and R was complete.
Only one primary structure per lot.
Correct.
Yes. Alright, so uh, it's the issues of, of common driveway here and uh. And the, the, the grades along this, those indicated on the plan here, what's your, your driveway grades?
Yeah, they uh, I believe they average uh, right now, they average about eleven percent. Um, the, there is the ability, there are a couple of spots where it, it, it's, it. It's flatter and then rises a little bit. But um, the ability is there to even those out along the, the length of the driveway. It actually is in, in pretty good shape for, for having a pretty uh consistent pitch. Um, there is that, that curvature, um, there, there is, there are a couple of spots where it makes sense. To um, broaden it a little bit, particularly in the curve. So that the, there's the ability for um, for a vehicle coming up and a vehicle going down. To have room to maneuver around each other, but that can be pretty well accomplished in the area of the, of the uh lower leach field. And then the curvature up toward the top of your screen as well. In fact, if you go up there, they already broadened it out a, a little bit, the prior owner.
Yeah, yeah, uh, I followed the stakes up there, it's uh. I see, it does get steeper right in here, but uh, it's just for a short bit. Let's say it does achieve the um, the goals of reducing disturbing the land. So um.
Are there any, are there any stone walls or trees along this?
Look, hey, Mark, you want to speak about?
Uh, there are none, where, where the, where the driveway's coming to Old County Road, it, it's, it's open now. There are no stones, there's no stones that require removal.
Along the roadway?
Along that roadway running into the property.
Yeah.
There are trees on either side, uh, but the, the width of this driveway now. Um, averages about fifteen feet wide, um, so there really doesn't require uh much tree removal along the driveway. There, there are some trees uh within that se- that have grown up in that, that septic area on, on lot one A. Uh, that are going to obviously have to be clear, cleared out of that area, but there still remains uh a buffer. Uh, along Old County Road, uh, so there's going to be a strip, there would still be a s- strip of trees there. So it won't be wide open to the uh, to the leaching trenches.
Well, if there's no other public comments, I don't have, I, I agree with the, the way the roads laid out.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
So we close the hearing first?
Close the hearing?
I move that we close the hearing.
The second that.
And I seconded that, so we'll have a.
I think you're saying you want a roll call vote.
Yes, we have it, we have a second of myself, so uh, roll call vote, Larry Boudreaux?
Yes.
Or Richard Wright?
Yes.
Lindsay Butler?
Yes.
Walt Meisner?
Yes.
And Roger Hoyt, yes. So we'll close the hearing at eight thirty-five. Um, we can have a, um, are there any? Would you say as far as the uh, the easement, the draws are drafted, the town council?
Can you repeat your question, Roger?
Oh, okay, the uh. Condition of the uh.
We lost your question, Roger, we're not, you're breaking.
Love to get you an Xbox One headset with a good mic on it.
A mic, I'm just using my, but uh, the condition would be that uh. Confirmation from town council.
With the condition that town council approves the easement?
Is that what you're trying to say, Roger?
That's correct.
Okay. Then I move approval of, of this uh, application. A subject to um, the conditions so state.
Second.
And the roll call vote, all in favor, Richard Wright?
Yes.
Lindsay Butler?
Yes.
Larry Boudreaux?
Yes.
Walt Meisner?
Yes.
Roger Hoyt, yes, so the motion carries and uh, we'll get the letter drawn. And um, Heather will let you know when it's, when it's ready, probably by Monday.
All right, thank you.
To our agenda, um.
Well, we're supposed to have open discussion, public comment. I don't know if there's anybody here for that. Roger, are you talking?
I'm talking, I'm trying to see who's still in attendance here. If we had Ed, he had mentioned.
You're saying, Roger, this is Ed McSwainy.
Hello, Ed.
Open discussion.
Yes.
Unfortunately, I was hoping to join you by Zoom, but I've had the same technical, except you seem to. At least half resolve yours and I didn't, so I'm just on the phone.
Okay.
But if I'm allowed to.
Well, you had forwarded me those drawings. If I can display them, would that satisfy you?
That would help, um, if I, if I may say a few words. The purpose of um, the open discussion tonight is for us, uh, for me. Uh, we're looking to obtain approval for um, five building lots. Um, going up Main Street and where it then becomes Winchton Road on Route twelve. Um, so it's just past where Chris Conrad now lives in the White House. It's the field on the right hand side going up Route twelve. That's what we're talking about. Um, many months ago, we had come forward uh with the plan designed by Chris Mossman. Surveying was done by Zok Surveyors and we showed five houses. Um, that is exactly what we're staying with is the five houses. Um, the house on the far left and the house on the far right, when you can bring up the plan, those will be uh. those will be lots going under the A and R approval. The three house lots in the middle, we're basically going to be filing under the open area, open area residential development, OSRD, so that'll require a special permit. And we have two curb cuts, and that's after going through and discussion a lot. Because that is Winchton Road, it's covered by the state of Massachusetts, so we had to go through the process of the DOT reviewing everything, which we have successfully completed. So the purpose of today is more or less just to make you aware that we will be in the near future starting the process to file for special permits, giving Heather information so she can start to advertise. I I was on the phone when Jamie was talking about site visits. If you think there's a benefit there with Chris Mossman and myself would be happy to meet you at the site and explain in detail if you think that's of any value. So that's basically it, that it's more or less kicking off. If you could share with your other folks there, that'd be great if they have any questions. Tonight, Chris isn't on, isn't on Zoom, because tonight it's more or less if make you aware that we are going to be kicking it off, and if there's any general questions, I'll jot them down and make sure we can get them answered. We also plan on doing, though, in the near future, bringing copies of the plans, both the highway plans that was approved by the Department of Transportation, I'll get into that in a minute. But we will talk with the fire department directly, the police department directly. We've been talking with Mr. Nims wearing both the highway department hat as well as the Department of Public Works hat. And there are no wetlands in the area, but we will make sure Chris will talk to Marshall and make him aware what's going on. One of the biggest things that's taken us time is the filing, like I said, with the Mass Department of Transportation, because the lots are in their domain. We have received the approval from them, and what was covered in that was extensive drainage calculations done by Chris Mossman, obviously the plan and the highway access plan. So DOT has approved the drainage, the site plan, as well as the highway access plan, and they have issued us an approval number. At that point, Roger, how would you like to proceed, or what other questions can I answer?
I I have a couple of questions.
There's a big area in the back, is that presumed to be open space and who controls that and how is it accessed?
All right, I'll go through that, so the total land area is nine point one four acres. We've got a total frontage of six hundred and sixty-seven point nine. Projected area of coverage is three point eight five. Projected lot frontage is the six hundred that will cover. Open space in the rear is five point two acres. Access to go from Winchton Road, there'll be an open area from there between looking at the, what we call the house number five and Chris Conrad's house, there is an open area of roughly eighty feet that runs parallel up to the back into the open area. In the open area, following the guidelines called out in the town's bylaws for open area residential development, that will be I use the term donated to conservation. Our plan is for each house we sell, a total of five houses, we will donate ten, two thousand dollars for a total of ten thousand to the conservation fund for the overall upkeep of the property in the back.
And who would own?
The town. The town would control it, and we assume it'd be given to conservation.
So I just want to ask, have you have you had any conversations with them and are they willing to accept that?
Well, we had conversations, this was probably, I think it was even prior to some of the board members there, but if you remember, Roger, we had opened that up and we had kind of showed the what the plans were going to be in the future, X number, way before the virus, so it's that long ago.
Well, yeah.
But we, but but we will, like I said.
Just to, it would be from Route 12, but.
Are you talking, Roger? Because we're not hearing.
Access is approved by the state, but what about to the?
You're breaking up, Roger, we can't, we're not getting you.
Roger needs some new ears.
Yeah. I have a couple of questions in general, and I'll just draw them in since Rogers is having trouble, technical problems. First off, I know that the town, the whole issue of the donation of the land is becoming a particularly hot item in town. In person, particularly, I would rather see the land owned by the property owners and them paying taxes on it than a two thousand dollar donation for each house.
I agree with you, Walt, that was my my concern too.
I think that's something that has to be discussed and and carried forward, because too often we're being donated land that ends up being landlocked and it's really not used, it's going off the tax rolls rolls and it's it's hurting the town long term. The second we have is, that's just a comment more than a thing. The second question I have that I'll have there is, are these tied into public sewer, water and sewer?
Yes.
Okay, so they are in the, that's that, that's good, and you'll.
They will be serviced both by the town water and town sewer and 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 discussions with DOT, but more specifically with Steve Nims and Department of Public Works. We've gone over that extensively of how we're going to do that work and so forth, so they're well aware.
Excellent, and the final question I have is about, you may recall when this came up a year ago or more, when you brought it up to us. We talked about sort of a desire, a long-term desire in the planning of the town to have sidewalks that recreate, that that restore the sidewalks that go to the center of town. And considering that the town is putting a considerable amount of efforts into trying to get state money for complete streets and that, this would be a property that would be primed for sidewalks down to the middle of town, are you still open to that?
I added this guy.
Now you, 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 we can't hear you now.
We can't hear you, Ed.
Ed, someone, you're breaking up.
But he said it'd be nice to have, but there'd be other things that would go to a higher priority. So that's basically the extent we had with the sidewalk discussion.
I'm I'm sorry, sorry to tell you, Ed, that we missed everything you just said, because we couldn't hear you.
What I had said is, that many months ago, when we, when I had gone in front of the planning board to tell them of our plans of bringing this project forward in the future, I had a discussion with Mr. Nims about the sidewalk, and he basically said, that's fine, that's that's great, but there's a lack of sidewalks going from where our property would be going towards the town down the hill, and he did not see at this point in time, with the limited amount of dollars in their budgets, sidewalks ever being in the very near future installed at the houses below our project. So he wasn't, he didn't really think that was a big need at this point in time. Not that it's not a need, but it's just not in the budget to do, that's what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, but there's also a considerable amount of effort to go get state money for complete streets to help fill that void, and so there's a long-term planning effort there, and when we have a developer do a lot, we'd want the developer to to, you know, that to that, for that to be part of the development. I'm just letting you know, Ed, that when you bring this forward, that's going to be a discussion topic.
That's fine.
I'm not trying to.
What I would like to, what I would like to go though back is to one of the statements made about the donation of land. And being on, listening to previous people tonight on conversation, one of the reasons we have the donation of land is if you look at your bylaws of open area residential development, that's basically what it's telling us to do. So we're just following the bylaws called out telling us how to implement the open area residential development. So I think if if you, if there's a real concern, you want it to stay as part of taxpayers and so forth, you you might want to tweak the.
Got cut off again, yes, he just got cut off again, Ed. Yeah, we we understand that, and that is one of the reasons why we're doing a bylaw review. But there are different ways to solve the open space problem, it doesn't necessarily have to be donated land. That's just one option for it, so, but no, that just, that will be brought up when you bring it forward to us, is all I'm saying.
And I think that was the case with Lakeside Village on Sherbert, that it's retained there, they retained ownership of the land, they just couldn't develop it, because they did a more condensed development on the on a portion of it, which is the intent of the open space bylaw partly is to disturb as little as possible by condensing the allowed amount of development on a on a small portion of the land. Are you hearing me?
I am, then can I ask?
Okay, and the other question I had is, is access to the property, you've got two common driveways access, but there's nothing shown for access into the remaining parcel of open space and especially if it's public property, we would need a connection to downtown with with the sidewalks would be an important thing.
On the on the access to the open land, again, I'm at the disadvantage, unfortunately, not being on Zoom to share the plan with you. But on the on the right-hand side going towards the house, there is an open area, and that's the that that leads to the background, if you if you can see it.
Right, but there's no, but Ed, there's no curb cut shown.
We will, we will have a curb cut there, but we will, okay, that's a point I'm taking now. So by the time we come forward, we will have talked to the DOT and Chris James and make that aware. However, let me ask this then, this is the dilemma I have. I thought all along was we were donating the land, that's why we said we'd make the contribution. But tonight I'm hearing that really the board is saying, geez, we're not too happy with that. Maybe we want you to have retained ownership, so it becomes still the the owners of a houses property, so they're paying property tax, i.e. if that's the case, then obviously they're not going to want access to it from a public way like that. So I guess I'm I'm asking for clearance, for guidance. Are we going with the open land with the idea that it's turned over to conservation? Or am I going with the idea that we should relook at this, incorporate so that the five owners basically are paying property tax, the land is left untouched, and we can do that through easements and so forth, but then it's private land that will not be really accessed by the public.
But it will need be, it will be accessed by the public for fire access and whatnot.
So.
Well, that would be through the property, just like anybody who has.
Exactly, exactly, we need access to be able to go back there and fight anything that needs to be happening.
Ed, all I'm doing is I'm telling you I'm one person and and.
No, 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 I understand that, but I guess I'm looking for.
My reference is to have it be owned by the property owners, but others may feel differently.
No, I agree, I agree with what you're saying, Walt, and I think, you know, if it's open space and you can do a conservation restriction on the property, but the landowners are the ones who own the land and they're paying for it.
Yeah, but from a legal point of view, our attorney, I I'm not sure how many attorneys would agree, is that if if the landowners are responsible for the payment of the taxes and so forth, who's responsible then for the liability if someone gets hurt?
Nobody, well, it's not open to the public, well, I guess you can do it a couple of ways, and my my opinion, what I would do is you leave it open space for these, for however many homes, you have five homeowners there. So it's not open to the public, but it's open space for the five homeowners there.
You could probably put it in chapter two.
And you, you know, you you just do a conservation restriction to say you can't build out there, pretty much. It can't be further developed.
Oh, no, I have no problem, I guess what I'm looking for, and and I appreciate, this is exactly, we're just informing you, we're going to start to kick this off, we're going to start to do the filings and so forth. I guess I'm now saying, could I have an opinion of the majority of the board members? Which way am I going that we should basically, when we come in, show that the land is going to be preserved, so it can't be built on, no problem. But are we going towards conservation, or would the board prefer to see that we do it so that the landowner, the five homeowners, and that's the extent of the homes being built on the land, they're responsible, i.e. it's become permanently part of their tax bill? I guess I'm I'm looking for some guidance.
That would be my my personal opinion, I would just put a conservation restriction on it, in perpetuity, you can't build on it.
And I agree with Lindsey.
I said, my comment would be that other town boards should have some some comment on whether they think there's a use for the town, does this serve the the town a use that would be benefit the town to have access and ownership of it? You know, is it, you know, something that the public can use within walking distance of the center of town? Or we think other boards may want to have some input if they think there's a reason that it should be public land.
I think that's, I think that's fine to solicit comments when they, when he puts forth the proposal.
Yes.
That's fine.
Okay. Roger, I'd like to suggest that since we're having such tedious technical difficulties, that we try to wrap this up as quickly as possible.
Yes, I I like that, Ed.
I'm all set, I'm all set.
Okay, thank you.
That's basically that we are going to be moving forward, so I appreciate your time.
Sidewalks are a big one.
I hear that, and I will talk to some folks, thank you.
All right, that's.
Roger, I do have a question, while it's open. Heather had mentioned, it was either Heather or you, if you want me to say some quick words on our other development, Brayev. I can wrap that up in a matter of seconds if you want.
It it is on the agenda, so we can.
I'll make this quick, so Brayev is a nine lot subdivision that we started several months ago. It was a development that had started, had been left vacant, and we took ownership of it. It's located off of Williams Road, it's nine homes, and that's what we had. It's nine homes and that's what we had purchased and that's what we're executing. Today, five of the homes are, um, are completed and folks live in them. Uh, we're currently constructing two more homes. One of them is under agreement and we have, um, the last two homes, we have received, um, uh, order of conditions and so forth, and we'll be starting to clear that land. And both those homes are currently, uh, are under reserves. So, uh, sales seem to be going well. Um, we're hoping that the last of the houses will be probably completed around the, depending on the, the winter and the severity of the weather. Uh, late February, March, um, we have right now also, uh, on the recommendation of the planning board, we basically opened the passbook account, um, which meant that as we had sales of homes, we put money in, um, well, it was supposed to go to the town treasurer, but because of the virus, it was never actually executed, just let you know Roger. So right now a town council is holding the funds in the town's escrow account. And, uh, we have, we have thirty-two thousand in that account. Uh, as we sell the next four houses, we'll add another thirty-two thousand for a total of sixty-four thousand. The primary focus of that money is to resurface the final coat on the roadway and create a sidewalk, uh, which we plan to do. We had received a, uh, quote a few months ago from PJ Albert for forty-two thousand, so we will have sixty-four, so we think we'll have plenty of funds to take care of that. Um, if we can finish, then we're hoping that we should by the end of February, March. If the spring is halfway decent, we'll then basically be looking to do the final, um, paving coat to install the sidewalks. Um, I know town, I guess the town meeting is May. I'm not sure if we'll be a hundred percent ready for that. If not, it'll be the one that follows after that. So we are taking care of the maintenance of the road this winter. And, um, so far, Mr. Mr. DPW is down there all the time. We haven't had any sewer water issues and, um, things seem to be going fine. The sales are doing well, so that, that's your upgrade.
Okay, I just wanted the idea of schedule, you know, where we were, if you were to have something on town meeting that we, you know, don't end up being rushed at the end.
No, we'll know in the next couple of months. Um, if, if, um, we get those houses going, that'll be a big part of it. And, um, we'll, we'll keep your advice of that. That's it, I'm done. Thank you very much, have a good evening.
Thank you, Ed.
Thank you, Ed.
Thank you, Ed.
All right, um, getting on with here, we had, uh, only thing I have, I guess we're at approval of meeting minutes. And, um, I had some comments on, on them, if I can open that up, I will share. And then I can probably just do the edits live and we will be all set.
Which, which minutes are you looking at?
The twenty-eighth.
Okay, I just want to pull them up. Okay, I'm ready whenever you are.
Yep, um. Let's see. Back to, uh, all right, um, I just wanted to somehow document the, uh, the site visit. And what I was thinking of doing is just put it at the, in the set of minutes and then just putting the minutes onto, um, both of the, the meetings on, uh, my town government just so that we have minutes recorded for each. And I was just going to say that we've noted the site visit, um, fill-in date, map parcel for the scenic road permit and the members present and the public, uh, Jamie Rowe, Anthony Kleese and, uh, Marshall Dennis. Um, that would be simple, I would just put that as the first item on the meeting minutes. Um, then, um, under Sherbet Road, uh, house numbers that we, under Sherbet Road, it just says, um, we would need to confirm with the house number and bylaw that we can number them that way. Rather than having definitively assigned numbers for you. That's still open, it's to be determined. Um, then towards the, on the second page, zoning bylaw review items, just a, a grammatical thing of, there are various items that are in need of review and revision and then delete the last three, three lines in the document. It just seemed to be, uh, and maybe, maybe we'll leave him in there, it's just that, uh, that, that's fine. It was as we discussed, so.
I move approval with these edits.
I'll second that.
Okay, uh, we'll have a roll call vote. Richard Wright?
Yep.
Larry Boudreau?
Yes.
Lindsay Butler?
Yes.
Walt Weisner?
Yes.
Roger Hoyt, yes, so minutes are approved as edited.
Roger, can you, do you just want to email me that and I'll fix it or?
I'll, I'll send it to you, yep, that's fine. And, um, moving on, uh, bylaw updates, we don't have anything specific. Um, DLT updates, just so, the, the survey is out there, we'll get that from, results from Karen on the ninth. We'll meet with her at, uh, six o'clock.
So, sorry, I have a meeting that night, um, at six P M. Hopefully it won't go longer than seven.
Oh, okay, yep, that's, that's, that's fine, we, you know, won't be voting on anything. It's just an update from Karen. And, um, bylaw review committee, I think I forwarded that email to you, so, uh, they would like to have us designate either a member or a designee that has, uh, equivalent experience and knowledge to a planning board member, um, for their meeting on the fifteenth. So if we can decide on the ninth, if anyone, uh, would like to do that, let us know. Um, next meeting is December ninth, we will meet with MRPC, uh, six o'clock and the regular meeting at six-thirty, I, we have a public hearing for High Street. It's one we've done twice before. I don't believe there's any change in information, it's just the last time they did not, uh, believe to get it recorded in time. Or we did not have the, the easements get recorded, the plan got recorded, but the easements didn't. Uh, any items for anyone else?
Ed, do we need to approve the minutes of October fourteenth that, uh, that Lindsay sent down?
Uh, it was approved as edited, I think with edits, correct?
I can't remember.
Last one, but I just couldn't remember what was edited. I might have edited them.
I thought because it was that special meeting, we just said, oh, we'll approve them at the next meeting. But I, I read through them and if it helps, I move approval of the minutes of October fourteenth as, as presented by Lindsay.
Okay, so, uh, the second on that?
I'll second it.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Lindsay Butler?
Yes.
Walt Meisner?
Yes.
Richard Wright?
Yes.
Larry Boudreau?
Yes.
And myself, Roger Hoyt, yes, so that's, minutes are approved of the fourteenth.
Shall I motion to adjourn?
You certainly may, please do.
I'll be glad to second it.
Okay, with the roll call vote, motioned and seconded, uh, Richard Wright?
Yes.
Walt Meisner?
Yes.
Larry Boudreau?
Yes.
Lindsay Butler?
Yes.
Roger Hoyt, yes. Thank you folks, it's been a long meeting.
Okay, good night, everybody.
Have a good night.
Enjoy your.
Have a good night, good Thanksgiving.
Thank you, and remind people that the, uh, the survey is out there. It'll be on the library website, uh, town website and council aging has it. Thank you.